Well, good morning. My name is Councilmember Greg Cassar. And I am so proud of what we're going to be able to pass on today's City Council Agenda. Today, we're going to be taking a vote on Item 30. And that vote finally gives full authority to our Civil Rights Office to guarantee the civil rights of every single person in this community. Austin stands out on our values of including everyone, no matter who you are, no matter where you come from, no matter who you love, that every person in this community should have the right to be able to live about their daily lives, especially at work, without facing discrimination or harassment. And we've seen, unfortunately, how recently at the Supreme Court, or up the street at the legislature, where there has been a promotion of discrimination, an erosion of people's civil rights. And here in Austin, we stand firmly against that. We stand for making sure that people have their basic rights protected. And so with the establishment of the Civil Rights Office here in the last budget, and now the Civil Rights Ordinance today, Austinites will know that we have their backs. That if you face sexual harassment, that you have a place to call. That if you're discriminated against at work or out on the street, that you have somebody to call who can enforce those civil rights ordinances and make sure that that never happens again. We have an excellent civil rights officer here in Carroll Johnson, hired by our city manager Spencer Kronk. When we brought Spencer here to be our city manager... When we brought Spencer here to be our city manager, this was the first thing that he and I met about. Because there are civil rights offices in other cities across the country, and we wanted to bring that here. And so we are here to let Austinites know that we have their backs, that there is a place that they can call, and that people should not have to face discrimination based on their race, or their gender, or who they love, or how they identify, or what they look like. Because we value every single person here the same. Every single person should be able to afford to live here, but then also have the freedom to thrive here. And so the next speaker is none other than our civil rights officer, Carol Johnson.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Cassar, and all of you for being here today. My name's Carol Johnson. I am honored to be the very first civil rights officer for the city of Austin. When I moved here in February, it was in the midst of pandemic and literally a day before a snowstorm left many families devastated, financially drained, and mentally exhausted. And all of this in the midst of civil unrest due to inequity in our society. Item 30 codifies into local ordinance that which our city leadership has already committed, and that to which the Office of Civil Rights is working to achieve. Equity and the enforcement of civil rights in a manner that restores dignity to our workers, strengthens laws against sexual harassment in the workplace, and outlines clear consequences for those who violate the law. Item 30 codifies, solidifies the Office of Civil Rights as a city department empowered with enforcing anti-discrimination ordinances and federal statutes, and is another major step in reimagining public safety and protecting the civil and labor rights of Austinites. The Office of Civil Rights is already connecting with the community, delivering feedback and recommendations to our city management, and working extensively with our partners to ensure that Austinites live here free from discrimination. Since February, we've held six outreach workshops, four on Fair Chance Hiring, two on combating hate crimes in the Asian-American Pacific Islander communities. And we are continuing to work with the Austin Police Department to do those workshops. Austin, I mean, excuse me, Item 30 reaffirms our commitment to a government that works for all, and ensures an equal opportunity for each of us to enjoy all of the wonderful things that Austin has to offer, regardless of our race, our color, our national origin, our status, who we love, our religion, our source of income, or any of the other things that divide us. I am grateful to our city manager Spencer Kronk for his support of the Office of Civil Rights, to Mayor and Council for their foresight in ensuring that we have these securities for Austinites, and also for Councilmember Cassar for his passion and persistence in civil rights. Today's vote is just another step towards a future where we can all prosper. Thank you so much.
Let's take congratulations to civil rights officer, proud to join with my colleagues, the Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Cassar, and the entire council today in approving this Item 30. This is an historic civil rights moment in this city. Let me try to put this in context for you. When I graduated from law school in the early 1980s, I began my practice as a civil rights lawyer, doing work primarily before the Austin Civil Rights Commission, the Human Rights Commission here in the city, which at that point was just an arm of the federal process. We became the Equal Employment Opportunity Office, the federal office's local arm in enforcing Title VII actions. That is a cumbersome process, was then, even is now, an important tool. But in this intervening 40 years, the city of Austin has stepped forward to lead and to grab horizons, show initiatives that have then brought forward civil rights protections at higher levels. Real proud to be part of a city that has done that. Austin leading very early in LGBTQ rights protection and assurances. Austin moving forward with Fair Chance Hiring practices in our city. But what we have really been missing in our city is the local focus for the local ordinances, the local initiatives that we have passed, and the ability to be able to enforce those in a way that makes them meaningful and real to people in our community. And that's what this moment talks about. This is the next step in what has been a 40-year effort in this city. Real proud to be part of this today. Real proud that we're not only talking about civil rights and holding up civil rights as an aspirational goal, but actually getting involved now in the tactical and enforcement actions to make this real. This office will be educating people in our community, employers in our community, employees in our community. This is the next step, and it is a historic moment. And I'm really proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Good morning. Happy Hanukkah. Thank you for coming out. And thank you to City Council, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of over 200 Austin-owned restaurants and bars for passing Item 30 later today. I'm Adam Orman, the co-owner of Locodoro Restaurant and a board member of Good Work Austin, a progressive independent hospitality association. Four years ago, we helped write Austin's Paid Sick Leave Ordinance with Council. While it was under attack by the courts and the legislature, we all saw during the pandemic how important paid sick leave policies are. They are not just an individual benefit. They are a matter of public health. As a community, we need to guarantee that our workforce can afford to stay home when they are unwell to stop the spread of all kinds of viruses. In a restaurant or other high-contact environment, of course, we have the added responsibility of keeping our guests healthy. But a paid sick leave ordinance means nothing without a local means of enforcement and compliance. Employees need a mechanism at the city level to make it as easy as possible to exercise their rights. And good actors need the city fully on their side to make sure that they are not competing with businesses that are able to ignore the law. It goes without saying that we need these same protections at the city level for the non-discrimination ordinances and Fair Chance Hiring rules that are already in place. We will no longer expect labor to navigate through EEOC, or TWC, or DOL to determine who protects them. The city's Office of Civil Rights will streamline that process, bring it closer to home, and hold offenders accountable. Finally, hospitality businesses account for the most sexual harassment complaints of any industry. This has been such a difficult process in the past, and there were different rules for businesses of different sizes. And this means that we don't know how many incidents have gone unreported. The Office of Civil Rights creates uniform rules for all businesses and a local agency where employees can seek justice. Those who have been too easily exploited will now know that Austin is home to safe workplaces for all. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Kathy Tobo. I have the privilege of representing City Council District 9 on the City Council. And I'm super excited about this step, the historic step, as the mayor indicated, that we're about to take here today at the city of Austin. You know, Austin is already one of the greatest places in the city, in the country, to live. And we want Austin to be one of the greatest places in the country to work. And with today's, with the passage today of the ordinance, we are going to ensure that every employee in the city of Austin has a safe and healthy workplace. And so, as you heard, this is making some important protections available to those employees of smaller businesses who may face sexual harassment in the workplace. We are going to provide a mechanism for employees who may face discrimination to hold those employers accountable. This has been a long, long time coming, and it is a very good day in Austin to see this forward. I want to thank a few people, Councilmember Cassar, for your leadership on this. I want to thank AFSMI, who has been the county and city employee union, who has been a consistent champion of a civil rights office. We would not have gotten here today without the leadership from Councilmember Cassar, as well as AFSMI. And I want to thank all of the representatives of the labor unions who are here today and who have assisted in guiding and shaping this office. Thank you very much.
Good morning. For decades, hair has become unreasonably complicated for the Black community. It's woven into our history as a representation of our ancestral tribes, our social status, our family background. Our ancestors celebrated our hair and our symbolic styles, which were worn with pride in both men and women for centuries. It really wasn't until the beginning of the transatlantic slave trade, when Afro hair, or kinks, or coils to curly textures were ridiculed or dehumanized, and even othered in comparison to European beauty standards. Today, certain hairstyles have the power to prevent us from obtaining degrees, achieving upward mobility, or even getting us fired. Our natural hair texture and styles have been used against us by a system that continues to harm Black men and women, and children, in workplace and in schools. At Measure, we launched the Innocence Initiative in 2019. This is a public education campaign to protect Black girls against adultification bias. But what we know is that Black girls become Black women, who sometimes face the added bias that happens in the workplace. Unfortunately, society's biases have resulted in unfair judgment and discrimination against Black women based on hair texture and protective styles, including braids, or locks, or twists. So today means a lot. Today means a lot. This added protection makes it clear that men and women who look like me, who wear their hair like my sons, or my daughter, or my husband, in dreads, for those that desire to free-form their hair, or to shave it clean as an act of sunshine, they can breathe a sigh of relief and exist the way that they are, free from fear of wearing their natural hair. Let's not become complacent in thinking that we don't need protections like this. Today, even more than yesterday, we have to act boldly and aggressively to fight against every form and expression of discrimination. I want to thank our community members that did the work to get us here today, our parents, our students, especially a woman named Angel Carroll, who's not here with us right now, but she's watching, who's helped push for this change to happen. And to that little Black girl who's considering the big chop right now, or pondering if she should go ahead and get those passion twists, I'm going to say, go do it. Go do it freely and without hesitation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alicia Roth Weigel. I'm excited to be here today speaking in support of Item 30 in both a personal and professional capacity. Personally, as a Jewish person, happy Hanukkah, as well as someone who's experienced far too much sexual harassment in every workplace I've ever been a part of, as a survivor of sexual assault, and as an intersex individual who unfortunately has to show up at the Capitol pretty much daily to prevent the slow and continual erosion of my rights here in this state. So, and professionally, as a Human Rights Commissioner for the city of Austin, for Greg Cassar's office. Thank you, Councilmember. So personally, I'm excited to be here as a member of the LGBTQIA+ community because this office is so needed. Here in Texas, people still lose housing for being HIV-positive. Yesterday was World AIDS Day, and this is still a huge problem here in this state. People still get fired for being gay. They still lose contracts for being trans. And we need this here in Austin to fortify and be a beacon for the rest of the South in saying that this is not okay, and that we are putting specific frameworks in place to help people navigate what they should do when they're experiencing these incidents. I'm also happy to be here supporting this professionally as a Human Rights Commissioner. Look, I'm really proud of what our commission has been able to support, whether it be helping to divert police funding towards mental health first responders, or whether it be diverting comprehensive city funds towards helping folks access abortion here in the city of Austin. And yet, we are still volunteers. And I do have to speak to the lack of capacity that we all have as professionals with day jobs to adequately serve in some of the roles that currently sit on our plate, including the conduction and how these non-discrimination hearings are conducted. And I want to personally say that there was one particular hearing I was a part of where I don't believe justice was served. We were served with these huge binders full of information without adequate time to review evidence. We were unaware of the specific parliamentary procedures and felt hamstrung by the way that it was conducted and our ability to have a full and adequate discussion to serve justice. And I left that hearing, and I went home and cried. Because these are real people's lives and their ability to live and exist in the workplace and just simply walking down the street. And so I'm really, really excited to have our new civil rights officer be able to take some of this off our plate. I'm a firm believer that in order for justice to be served, sometimes it means ceding some of your own personal power. And I know I, as a commissioner, am really happy to be able to do that today. So I look forward to working with you in your office, continuing to work with everyone behind me. Thank you so much, and really excited about Item 30 passing here today at City Hall.
Good morning. My name is Terry P. Mitchell. I am the founder of the Black Leaders Collective. We are so excited to be here today. The Black Leaders Collective has been a part of holding the city accountable for the Civil Rights Office since its initial conception. And man, how far we've come in such a short span of time. I want to thank our mayor, Mayor Adler, our civil rights officer, Carol Johnson, our council member, Greg Cassar, our Mayor Pro Tem, Natasha Harper-Madison, and all of council, including our city manager Spencer Kronk, for their tireless dedication to our community and their great efforts toward a more equitable city. When we say civil rights, too often it's connoted to just Black issues. And though that is justified, given how grossly oppressed Black people have been in this country, and in this city specifically, it is not just a Black issue. When we say civil rights, what we're really saying is that every single human being should have the basic human rights as anyone else. That's it. That's all that we're saying. We have more in common than we do different. And if we focus on those commonalities and focus on building a better city, a better community for all, we all win. Everyone deserves a fair shot at a quality of life, happiness, and the pursuit of justice and liberty. That should be no matter of your gender, your race, your socioeconomic status, your age, your disability, or your sexual identity. I am so proud to be born and raised in Austin, especially at monumental times like today, where we have been leading and paving the way in the spaces of innovation and creativity. What we do now in the spaces of diversity, equity, and inclusion will also pave the way and be leaders in that space as well. Congratulations to my city on the passing of Item 30.
Good morning. My name is Reginald Smith. And I'm here today to support Item 30 as the founder and chair of Building Promise. That's the Austin's new reentry hub. Building Promise is an organization that's for helping people that's transitioning from jails and prisons. And quite often, they have a hard time doing anything, much less finding a job or housing. I mean, I know from my own personal experience as a person with justice involvement. You know, it's been almost 10 years since I've been out of prison, and I haven't even been able to get on a lease. I've had, been turned down for jobs. And that's why in 2016, with a group of advocates with justice involvement organizations from the area like Grassroots Leadership and the leadership of the political leaders like Greg Cassar and others, we were able to pass a Fair Chance Hiring Act. And what's so important about today is that we're able to actually put some teeth to that act today by giving it an enforcement mechanism through the Civil Rights Office. You know, there's a lot of reasons why people go back to prison. And one of the main reasons is because they can't find employment. They can't take care of their families and their financial obligations. And then they can't get the training that they need to do better. That's why programs like Building Promise and another program here named Jails to Jobs is so important. You know, Jails to Jobs is taking young people and giving them job skills, and the most importantly, mentors who have justice involvement to help them navigate, you know, the challenges and barriers that they're going to face because of a criminal conviction. So I just want to say that it's very important that folks with justice involvement have an opportunity to meet their full potential. And if it wasn't for organizations like Jails to Jobs, and Building Promise, and Grassroots Leadership, Mels, and all these other organizations who have been fighting for so many years to give us the rights that we should have, then we wouldn't have them. And so again, I just want to thank Greg and the mayor for passing this historic legislation. And I also want to thank the people of Austin for giving folks that have justice involvement a second chance. Thank you.
So this morning, we'll pass Austin's Civil Rights Ordinance. And we're going to provide direction to continue leading in the area of civil rights. As the mayor said, before there were federal protections for all LGBTQ individuals in this country, Austin led and said that we were going to actually not just protect some folks, but expand our civil rights ordinance, and we led in that way. We also led in the area of making sure that we protected people that were HIV-positive before the federal government and stepped in and did so. We passed Fair Chance Hiring to protect people that were formerly incarcerated. And we're continuing to urge the state and the federal government to do so. So we want to continue to lead. So we're going to provide direction today, if it's voted upon, to say we should protect whistleblowers. To talk about, hey, we should also protect folks, no matter what business they're in. Because there's still a patchwork of federal laws that actually allow that in some places you could potentially get turned away because of your sexual orientation. People get, you know, we don't want people to be able to say, hey, it's okay that you could get fired from this kind of business, but not that kind of business because you're Latino, or because you're Black, or because of your accent, or your hair. As Mimi talked about, there are a lot of times where people may not face discrimination supposedly because of their race, but because of what they look like, or because of their hair, and that's not acceptable. And so we're going to begin a process after today to look at ways that we further expand the Civil Rights Ordinance to make sure that no matter which business you are in, no matter which part of the city you are from, no matter who you are, or what you look like, that you should be protected from discrimination and harassment, and always have a place to go so that the city of Austin is taking care of every single person in our community. So we look forward to passing this ordinance and then beginning a process to expand it, to fully protect everyone. So thank you all so much, and we're available for questions. Anything else you want to add? Any questions? Sure thing.
Thank you for that question. So this ordinance is going to do a couple of things, which is provide some enforcement authority within the Office of Civil Rights that was not previously there. We'll be able to kind of assist with the adjudication of some of these cases through an administrative law judge process to help move these cases along. We'll also have a pretty comprehensive ADR, Alternative Dispute Resolution process, so that we can mediate and conciliate cases that come through housing, employment, and try to move those cases more expediently through the process so people can, you know, have their issues redressed. And again, as spoken on earlier, we'll be looking at, we're adding some provisions that are consistent with what the Texas Legislature did earlier this year, which is provide some additional protections for those who may be facing sexual harassment in the workplace. It will increase the number of days they have to file a sexual harassment complaint to 300 days. It also decreases the number of employees that would be covered under an employer to one. And it also provides that employers need to take immediate and corrective action when an employee files a sexual harassment complaint.
And I think you heard from Alicia, who's on the Human Rights Commission, that the current process relies heavily on volunteers and is a fragmented process across multiple departments. And so what this ordinance will really do is make sure that folks know that they can call the civil rights officer and that there's something that can get done about it to correct the issue immediately, rather than sort of a fragmented process that sometimes has relied too much on volunteer work. Any other questions? One other really key thing that the civil rights officer mentioned is we are expanding protections for those that face sexual harassment in the ordinance today to make sure that no matter which business you are in, it used to only be big businesses had protections against sexual harassment. We're making sure every business in this city has requirements that there not be sexual harassment in that workplace. And we are going to be looking at expanding other protections to make sure that if you feel like safety conditions are wrong, or you're a whistleblower on a serious case, that you can also come to the city as well. Thank you all so much. Again, thank you to the labor movement that has been such supporters. Thank you to the civil rights movement, and to our city staff, and to everybody that's been a part of this. Thank you all very much.
Good morning, everybody, and thanks so much for sticking with us here on KXAN Live. I'm Will Dupree, coming to you from the KXAN Live studio. Just a few moments ago, we saw that news conference conclude there outside Austin City Hall, where city council members are going to be voting on Item 30. That is this ordinance that will codify some of the enforcement abilities for the city's Civil Rights Office. And you heard some of the examples there of what they're hoping for this to be able to do. Additionally, over on our website, kxan.com, you can find an article where we're tracking some of the other things that city council are going to be voting on today. And I do want to bring that up so you all can see it really quickly. So we're going to switch over to another screen so that we can get a sense of the discussions and votes that are happening at City Council. In addition to this ordinance that you just heard about there, Item 30, the city council will consider negotiations with emergency medical services. will consider negotiations with emergency medical services. That is going to be happening for a while now. So additionally, some actions about housing costs, funding for live music venues. Our own Candy Rodriguez here at KXAN did a story about this this morning. You can read about that as well on our website at kxan.com. Plus, they're going to take some action about this partnership and agreement with Front Steps to provide housing for disabled individuals. You can find those stories over on our website, on our homepage at kxan.com. You can also access them anytime on the KXAN News smartphone app. Please download it if you haven't done so already. We thank you again for watching this morning. I'm Will Dupree, coming to you from the KXAN Live studio. We'll see you back here another time today. Please, everybody, stay safe and healthy out there. Take care.